Now, welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners work session. It is Tuesday, November 5th. We're a little past nine o'clock because of finance, but this work sessions always follow when we
Who chaired that?
When we have, work sessions always follow, sometimes committees, and then it will start when the committee ends. The committee did end. Thank you for those commissioners who were waiting with your patience. With that, I will call to order the Kent County Board of Commissioners work session for the 2022 proposed budget, and I will turn it over to our county administrator, Al.
Good morning again. It's a pleasure to be part of proposing my first budget back at Kent County. And there, really, there's nothing here we shouldn't be able to get through by six or seven tonight, so I wouldn't worry about that. But hopefully, if I had a chance to take a look at your book, we tried to get it to you a little bit early. And also, if you have questions, go ahead and ask them while we're presenting, and then also when we're done. It's still not too late, plenty of time to ask for questions before the budget would go to the full board for proposal, for approval. So, I will be summarizing the general fund statements, included on pages 26 and 27 of the annual budget summary, highlighting the key changes in the 2022 proposed budget. So if you have your book, if you want to follow along, that's great. If not, of course, we have it right up on the screen. All right, so property tax revenue is up 5.52 million. State revenue sharing, of course, with the increase this year, up 3.87. Personnel costs up 3.77. Contingency is up 2. DEI, 0.4 million. Transfers out for the CIP fund, 2.03 million. Transfers out for health, 0.42 million. Transfers out for the lodging excise tax fund, 0.72 million. And the Series 2010 debt maturity is 0.77 million. This is a general fund by category located on page 26 of the budget document. So, moving left to right, the first column contains revenue and expenses by category, followed by 2020 actuals, the 2021 adopted budget, and the 2022 proposed budget on the right. In summary, the 2022 general fund sources are estimated to increase 7.3 million, or 3.8% over the 2021 adopted budget, and from 192.3 million to 199.6 million. While the total uses are also proposed to increase 7.3 million, or 3.8% over the prior year. This results in a structurally balanced budget proposal, which of course meets Michigan law, and even better than meets Michigan law, because we're not using reserves to balance the budget, it's structural balance. Okay, I'll turn it over to Jeff, and he's gonna walk us through revenues.
Good morning, everyone. Roger told me to keep this brief. Is that what you said, Roger? Oh. So if we're looking at revenues, I'm gonna go into taxes a little bit. You can see we're proposing a 5.2% increase in taxes. It's a little higher than normal because we actually budgeted lower last year due to the pandemic. We expected collections to be a little less, but they didn't come to fruition. So we went back to the full allocation, which results in a little bigger, larger budget increase. So it makes up 56.3% of the total sources. 5.2% increase. If you look at, it's based on 4.185 mills, unchanged from the prior year. Estimated taxable value is 27.619 billion, which is a 4% increase over last year's finalized taxable of 26.557 billion. These two variables. None of these variables are finalized until the spring, so these are estimates at this point. And again, the estimated collection was lower last year, however, we put it back to where it was in historical times. See, the county millages have been rolled back by Headley every year since 2016, and these are permanent reductions due to Headley. Highlighted column there, the full mills was 6.0993. The operating millage wasn't affected for the rollback until 2019, and that was because the county had not historically leveled, levy the full amount. Lost mills to date for general fund, operating 0.0953, which creates 2.379 loss revenue. And again, that's permanent reduction.
Yes?
When you say permanent reduction, though, that's without a vote of the people?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, there's no permanence unless we're talking about farmland preservation.
Condemnation, you forgot about.
Okay, even that's not permanent. Thank you, Commissioner Stack for getting the legal back.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, okay. You can see across all millages, the permanent rollback, just under $4 million, not permanent unless a vote of the people, thank you. Average CPI, and this is mainly a result of lower CPI than typical historical, 1.7%. 21 is projected to be a little higher at 3.7, so, which is the highest rate in quite a long time.
Yes, please, go ahead, Commissioner Stack.
Just quick, do you know, what has our capital value increased over the last 10 years? I keep that on the top of my head, I'm surprised you don't have that.
As the fact of the book shows, increase in tax providing, the last page of the budget book, we go ahead and population in there.
Speculate that the population has grown at a faster rate than the taxable value.
So page 86 is what Marvin's referring to. Add population here, so we know for sure.
Move down to intergovernmental revenue category. It's gonna, makes up 12.8% of the total resources. We're projecting an increase of 3.7 million, or 16.8% from the 2021 budget. The increase is attributed to a $3.9 million increase in state revenue sharing. And again, under this category, we had anticipated a perhaps reduction due to COVID, so we budgeted a little low last year, that didn't come to fruition, so now we've backed it up to historical rates. Charges for services shows a decrease of 1.6 million, or 5.3% from 21 budget. The decrease is attributed both to a 4.4 million reduction in the sheriff work release program, we haven't been able to utilize that as much due to COVID. 0.8 million decrease in internal support, of internal costs not being able to be allocated to the CARES Act funds, and a $1.2 million decrease in name search fees, and we can no longer collect those according to us. Decreases are offset by a 0.4 million increase in the real estate transfer tax, and a 0.45 million dollar increase in recording fees. Raw reduction, though, of 5.3% in that category. Investment rents and royalties make up 2.1% of the total sources, shows a decrease of 206,000, or 4.7%. And as you all know, rates are pretty much near zero, so our investment income is down considerably over 2019. Other revenue, SFLAT showing a decrease of 29,000, or 0.4% from the 21 budget, not a whole lot to talk about in that category. Transfers in show the decrease of 63,000, or 0.3%. The decrease in transfers is 337. Increase in the correction of detention millage fund to support operations and capital. It's offset by a $400,000 reduction from the delinquent tax of auction proceeds count. That covers all of the revenue categories? Is there any questions? Expenses over to Marvin.
Revenue sharing is in what category?
Sorry?
Revenue sharing is in what category in the last?
Intergovernmental revenue.
And revenue sharing went up this year?
We did budget lower again last year due to, we expected a decrease. If you remember, they offset some of our revenue sharing in 2020 with a CARES Act replacement, so we just weren't sure what was gonna happen, so we budgeted lower last year.
Commissioner Morgan?
So, hey Jeff, how are you?
Good.
So my takeaway is, with all this that's happened, our sources have gone up 3.8%.
Correct.
Okay. I like to keep things kind of simple, Jeff.
Okay, anyone else? All right, continue.
Good morning. So we're gonna look at the general fund expenses a couple of different ways. We're gonna look at it by category, and then again, by function. And this is just, this is basically a financial summary of what's contained in the transmit letter on page five, so make sure if you haven't read that, to look at that at a future time. Personnel, personnel category makes up 51.2% of the total budget. It shows an increase of $3.5 million, a 3.5% over the prior year. Whether a request for new positions, the proposed budget maintains existing staffing levels. The requested positions that I spoke of will be vetted in the near future, and a potential proposal will be brought back to the board at a future date. Charges for services category makes up 24.2% of the budget, and shows an increase of $1.8 million, a 3.9% from 46.4 million to 48.2 million. Most of the increase is attributed to a $400,000 increase in court-appointed attorneys, and juror fees, a $2 million contingency in the admin budget for potential new initiatives, new position requests, funding to handle court case backlogs, and other health and public safety issues that may arise as a result of the pandemic. These are all offset by a $770,000 reduction in debt service as the debt on the sheriff's admin building is expiring in 2021. Capital category shows an increase of $508,000, or 20.5% over the prior year. This is attributed to the increase in the sheriff's capital budget for vehicles, including five additional cruisers to accommodate potential new positions, and seven non-police cruisers budgeted as compared to zero that were budgeted in the prior year.
Marvin, this is on page 26 of our proposed budget book, right?
Yes, we're still on page 26. Transfers out category makes up 24.9% of the total general fund budget, which shows an increase of $1.4 million, or 2.9% over the prior year, from $48.3 million to $49.7 million. Drilling down into the transfers out category, we see the transfers out other shows a decrease of $756,000, or 16.7%. This is due to a $700,000 decrease in the transfers out to the lodging excise tax fund, and this was designed to maintain the lodging excise tax fund balance as a result of lost revenues in 2020 and 2021. And we'll look at the lodging excise tax fund a little closer when we meet next time. Transfers out to the childcare fund shows a decrease of $258,500, or 1.7%. This can be attributed to the state now reimbursing 100%, for expenses related to the 17-year-old juvenile detention population versus something closer to 50% in prior years. Answers out to the health fund shows an increase of $423,800, or 4.7%. This is largely, largely due to reduced Medicaid reimbursement revenue as a result of reduced cases in various programs across the health department in 2021. That's due to the pandemic as well. Answers out to the CIP fund shows a $2 million, 19.9% increase over the prior year for 2022. The equivalent mills allocated to the CIP budget was 0.3 mills as compared to the 0.225 mills that was allocated in the prior year. Questions so far?
Yes, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. In regard to the personnel expenses, it looks to me, just the high level, that probably not feeling in the '22 budget, you know, the impacts of like what we're seeing with CIP inflation this year. I assume that's due to, you know, a number of these, you know, factors baked into contracts and whatnot. What year do you expect we'll start feeling the impact of the inflationary pressures?
Hard to tell, you know, I think our wages are, our union contracts, our union groups are all under contract currently. Some of those are subject to open in the next few years, maybe, maybe next year or the following year. But there's always the, the healthcare, that's always subject to increases. We've been lucky, in the, in the last few years, we've been well managed, and we've kept those, those costs down. For 2022, we're seeing a decrease in the pension rate that helped keep the personnel increase relatively flat as compared to other years.
Yes, Commissioner Bukowski.
With our attention still on that personnel line item, it, at a high level, is there any additional staff there, and any general fund staff?
Yeah, there's no additional staff added as part of the 2022 budget. There were some positions added mid-year in 2021, but not as part of the budget process. There, there were requests for additional positions, and those are currently being reviewed and further vetted, and a recommendation will be brought back to the board at a future date.
And that's included in the budget?
That's included in the contingency line for potential positions.
Continue, Marvin.
Now we'll look at the general fund by function, and that can be found on page 27 of your budget document. Governmental function makes up 20.6% of the total budget, shows an increase of $3 million, or 7.8% over the prior year. Drilling down into this, this function, we see equalization is down $144,500, or 8.4%. This is due to a data scientist position being relocated to the administrator's budget. Opposed budget for the clerk's office is up $157,000, or 4.7%. County clerk's budget increases in even numbered, even numbered years due to statewide or national elections, and 2022 is an election year. Facility management's proposed budget is, shows a decrease of $9,800, or one tenth of 1%. Facility's budget maintains existing programs and services, but, but has a reduced operating capital plan as compared to the prior year. Opposed budget for policy admin is up $2.6 million, or 73.2%. This is due to a $300,000 increase in personnel costs due to two full-time equivalent positions added mid-year in 2021 for the diversity equity and inclusion program, and the one data analyst position mentioned previously.
So three, three positions, or 2.5 million? I don't get that, Marvin, you gotta, you gotta, I better turn on my microphone.
Go ahead, Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks, sorry. That just jumped out at me for some reason.
What was the question, sir?
Well, it's three positions that you mentioned, it's gotta be more than that, right? I mean...
Right, there's two positions added mid-year for, as I said.
I get that.
Are you talking about the 2.6 million dollars?
Yeah.
Okay, as I'm, I'll summarize that as I continue to move on.
Oh, well, thanks. I think I got ahead of myself, did I?
A little bit.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so the increase also includes a $200,000 increase for programming in the DEI budget, a $50,000 increase for outside legal counsel, and the $2 million contingency budget mentioned previously.
Keep going, Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks. How many people are we anticipating hiring for crying out loud?
That's yet to be determined, but the contingency budget was not just for positions, but it was for unknown events related to the pandemic, potentially public, public safety issues, health, potential health issues, court caseload backlog, and the like. We don't know, we weren't able to define that.
That's why I said contingency.
We set aside some funding in the event that it's much larger than we could anticipate.
Okay.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to make a special request for funding to replace Administrator Vanderburg's coffee mug.
My question...
It'll be bipartisan.
I think we need to supply that.
I think there's one in the closet. I don't know why we haven't gotten in one sooner, but we'll definitely put that on the list. Let me get my list. Yes, Commissioner Wooden.
You know, I think we, history needs to mark this day that Commissioner Coleman and Commissioner Wooden have come together on an issue. But I was wondering, have we ever done a comparison of the percentage of our policy and administration budget compared to similar counties of our size, and even counties that are larger? I'm thinking, you know, obviously, our administrators, previous employer Ottawa is often our compatriot when comparing things, but also Oakland County, McCombe County, Wayne, others that are larger, not necessarily thinking that we always should aspire to their policy goals, but as we are growing, our demands will grow with it. And so seeing how our larger, urbanized counties have, what the percentage of their administration to their larger budget is, just to see where we're, we're at.
The short answer is I did that about every four or five years in Ottawa County. I don't know if we've done that, Ken, or not? We'll find out and get you an answer. But we will be doing things like that.
Perfect.
Al, I think I'm gonna have to have you stand at the mic when you speak, because it's harder to hear. So if you wanna be next to Marvin, you guys go back and forth, or just when, when you have to answer, anyone who has to talk, if you give me by a mic, it's helpful. Thanks. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask about the outside counsel. Is that, do we normally have, I mean, there's no line item here, but is that something that we see increasing? Do we, are we basing this off of what we spent in 2021, or what, what percentage are we looking at?
30% increase, and I can't speak to the specifics of that. Just gonna require somebody from the admin office to speak to that.
Okay.
Other than the administrator, apparently.
I can probably help a little bit. There was a lot of extra cases this past year. We expect some of those to continue in the next year. One of them was a tax for clergy case, was a big one that required a lot of outside counsel. And the other larger ones aren't coming to my mind right now, but that trend has continued in the last, in addition to allocation was required.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. So my question is, to clarify this $2 million contingency for staffing, if we approve this budget with a $2 million contingency allocated in it, as those positions are in fact filled, that would not come back for a budgetary amendment, am I right?
An increased appropriation, but it would require finance committee approval to transfer the budget from one appropriated budget to another, so it would require some action before it can be transferred in, in spend.
So LHR would have to approve the staffing expansion, and then the finance committee would have to approve just for purposes of reallocating from line item to line item?
That's correct. It's not really line item to line item, but it's...
From one allocation to a specific...
One appropriation level to another.
Okay, all right.
Department to department.
So we'll see these as they go on?
That's correct. You'll see, you'll see any activity related to that contingency will more than likely require board action. And this is a one-time event, and it was in part due to the transition from old administration to new, because, you know, there was, it was right, right at that time when we were making the transition, we had a lot of unanswered questions, as well as the other things that I mentioned.
Great, thank you, Marvin.
Commissioner McLeod.
So I think you answered kind of some of my questions, because I had had questions about the 2 million contingency, and just wondering if this was a normal occurrence for it to be that large, because that just seemed like a huge percentage increase, but Commissioner's answered, asked the question that I wanted answered, so thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Opposed budget for the treasurer's office shows $124,700, or 9.4% increase. This is due to regular increases in personnel, and a $51,000 increase in bond insurance that was formally accounted for in the vest management fund. Next, we'll look at the public safety or budget, the public safety function of the sheriff's department budget. It shows, it makes up 36% of the total budget, and shows an increase of $1.9 million, or 2.7% over the prior year. Personnel costs make up $2.2 million of the increase. The vehicle budget is up $570,000, as mentioned previously. And the education and training budget for correction and patrol officers is up $96,000. Those increases are offset by the $770,000 decrease in debt service payments that we mentioned previously. This whole function makes up 13.8% of the proposed budget, shows an increase of $1 million, at 3.9% from 26.4 million to 27.4 million. Personnel costs increases make up $423,000 of this increase. Court-appointed attorney fees and juror fees are up $400,000. Circuit court legal fees are up $100,000, and these increases are due to the court backlog caused by the pandemic.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you. Marvin, if, if we end up adding another judge this coming year, does that mean a budgetary change here?
Yes, it would. There's not, there's not an additional judge position budgeted in here, and I believe that's mostly funded by the state, partially funded by the county.
Yes, but I think the staffing, though, ends up being our responsibility, so, but we'll deal with that if the recommendation is approved.
What's the timeframe on that?
It would be approved?
Yep, come on up, Al. Thank you.
It would basically be approved...
It would basically be approved in the state budget that would go into effect the following year. And so that's why it wasn't a request for this year because the money wouldn't be expended until January 1 of 2023. And so, so that's why. So it's a timing thing with the state. The legislature should be approving it and then it will, it'll come back to the county to approve.
That's their legislature's budget year 2023?
Well, it's the budget that starts October 1 of next year. So it's FY 2223 in how the state budget works.
Depending upon when it comes in, our budget, of course, is on a fiscal or a calendar year.
Right, it probably started in January would be my guess because that's how they do all the state judge increases and all that type of thing. My guess is they would start that and also has to start with the election cycle. Thank you, so, yeah.
Thanks.
Social services, that function makes up 3.8% of the total budget. It shows a decrease of $224,000 or 2.9%. This decrease is contributed to the reduction in the contribution to Lake Shore Regional entity for substance abuse services as a result of the expected decrease in liquor tax revenue. Revenue split 5050 with the county general fund and the substance abuse provider and is expected to decrease from 3.7 million to 3.3 million dollars in 2022. Recreation and culture function of the parks department budget makes up 3.2% of the total uses. It shows an increase of $208,000 at 3.3% over the prior year. Mostly the increase in this budget is in the personnel category and the proposed budget maintains existing programs and services. Community and economic development function makes up 6/1% of the total budget and shows an increase of $67,000 or 5.5% over the prior year. The increase in this budget is attributed to personnel increases in the register of deeds budget and the cooperative extension and economic development budgets in this category or this function are flat. Public works category or the drains budget makes up 4/1% of the total uses and shows a decrease of $2,000 to 2/1%. And this this decrease can be attributed to a $25,000 decrease in the rent line as the drains office is expected to relocate from the drain commission or, excuse me, growth commission to the cooperative extension building. Increase is offset by a $20,000 increase in the drains at large budget to bring it in line with recent spending trends. Questions on that?
Commissioner Stack?
Sorry, couldn't resist. The register of deeds expenditures are fit under the community and economic development line?
Correct, that's where they're classified by the state.
Learn something new every budget work session, don't we, Commissioner Stack? All right.
Hey, the proposed budget review will continue on October 19. The finance committee is scheduled to act on the proposed budget on November 2. The public hearing is scheduled for November 4 and the full board is scheduled to act on the budget edits meeting on November 18. Have any additional questions or discussion that I could have now?
I'll ask, what's the plan to cover on the 19?
Non-general fund budgets.
Okay.
And potentially, we can take additional questions on the general fund, but also if you have questions after this meeting, if you want to email them to Kaylee before October 15, we can provide a Q and A document or potentially answer questions at the next session.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? Yes, Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you Chair. Do, as far as our debt burden, do we have any significant number of outstanding obligations that have like variable rates that would be exposed to any increase in interest rate, you know, municipal bonds?
No, not that I'm aware of. And there's a, you know, the county's debt is less than 1%, you know, and the maximum allowable is like 10% of SEV and you can see that summarized on page 11 in the transmittal letter. So the county's in good position as it relates to debt and I don't know, I'm not aware of any.
Wouldn't have any major surprises in terms of outgoing interest expense? Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, well, gentlemen, we will go ahead then and plan our next work session for the 19th and as Marvin had said, if you have any questions between now and then, we'll get an email. You want to email to Al on those and then Al can take them from there. So why don't we have any questions that come up between now and then to Al? And as Marvin said, we've done this before, where we do a Q and A that we get added to the mix and then we'll have the the next session on the 19th. So let me open up public comment. Is there any public that would like to address the budget work session this morning? Seeing none, I will close public comment. That will bring us to miscellaneous. Okay, no miscellaneous this morning and we are adjourned.
I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.